Say the pledge. Call the meeting to order. First thing, I just want to welcome Aaron as our new city attorney.
Thank you.
Welcome, and we'll try and give you a workout tonight. Nothing hard.
Yeah, that's our intention.
Okay, is anyone here for the public forum that would like to manage to speak? The people that are here concerning the water projects and so on, that will have, give you time to speak at that, at that point in the agenda. Is there any, anyone else here that wanted to say anything? If not, we'll proceed, we'll move on. For the approval of the agenda, Aaron, is there anything you want to add to our agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. Lyle?
No.
Pete?
No.
Julie?
Nothing.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and do we have Dean Conklin?
No. I was gonna let you add him.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then, yes, we will add Dean Conklin as here. We're gonna put him under...
New business.
Aye. New business.
And I did print all copies of the letter from ISG regarding Dean's request. And did you get that, Aaron? I sent that to you earlier today.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale, seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. Everybody had time to take a look at that. Claims for the month. Hopefully, everybody had time to look at the draft plan. And the quarterly financials. If so, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
A move.
Motion made by Pete.
Second.
Seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no public hearings. We are gonna start out with the Brown Street improvements. Mike Henderson is here. We've talked about this in the past. There's been some issues with water in that area. We, we have gotten together, we looked at that area. There, there's been a number of things we've had the engineer look at. There is a number of different proposals. It, it's, it's a problem. I'm not sure how we wanna go ahead with this. Brian, do you wanna talk about the last thing we had spoken about?
So, I'll just recap. Brian Fetzel, the city engineer. So back in February, we had taken a look at it. I went out to the site and, and looked around, and we put together a few different options. The first option was to put a, basically a culvert underneath Brown Street. That would basically drain to that lower area east of Brown Street. The second option we provided a cost estimate for would be to put a culvert, culvert under the, the residential driveway and then do a little bit of ditch grading. That would allow the water to drain to the existing culvert under the road, which would then, you know, drain to that dry area, or that, excuse me, that lower area that's on the east side of the road. In addition to that, we also provided cost estimates for a small, a small stormwater basin on the east side in the, the old right away, I believe, of the railroad. And then, but then in, included with that, then would also be some storm sewer costs that would have to be, in order to provide an outlet for that basin. So there'd need to be some storm sewer that was added to High Street. So that was what we provided back in February, was all those cost estimates for those options. At that time, then, the city council asked us to look at what the costs would be if Brown Street were upgraded to a paved road with full curb and gutter and full storm sewer. So then, so we did, we provided those estimates, and then, at that time, we presented them, and then there was no action taken. At that time, I think, because they wanted to maybe kinda feel out the neighborhood and see, you know, what people, people's thoughts were on that. Then we met again, I believe it was last month before the last city council meeting, again on site, and then just kinda looked things over. And then, I'm not sure if the, you know, the city's leaning one way or another now, but I can answer any questions, I guess, about any of the other options we had, we had discussed previously.
Yeah. There is a representative, I think the city, or the county admis, county, the administrator from the nursing home plans on being here.
Okay.
He's gonna be here till about quarter after. They have some concerns about the water. Even having the ditch, more of the water coming through the culvert. Do you have any idea how long that culvert has been there?
That, I couldn't tell you.
It's been, uh, what, in the water and sewer road?
Okay, so it's been how many years?
Two thousand five.
That sounds about right.
I can't.
I'm not, yeah.
It was two thousand five when that was upgraded.
That, that's the one that goes across the road over towards the nursing home?
Right.
Does it work?
It's... It does.
It smashed a little bit on the, on the upstream end, but...
You mean what?
It functions, I'm sure.
What's it, what's its capacity, or what's its...
It is...
Does it shut, or not be...
Well, I mean, it's, it's crushed on the one end a little bit, so there is some damage to it. So it probably doesn't have, you know, a full capacity, basically, because, you know, it's, it's crushed in a little bit.
And I think part of the problem was the contour of the ditch. It seemed to be a bit of a...
Well, right now, right, there's really not much of a ditch, I would say, north of that culvert inlet. So, I mean, if, if you, let's say you're to put a culvert under the driveway right now, then it would really have nowhere to go with also doing some ditch grading.
But that, Lonnie Bacon contoured that land. Now, can he contour the ditch? That's his land.
The, there should be enough right away there, I believe, to, to provide some type of, I mean, it wouldn't, wouldn't be a giant ditch, it'd be a little drainage swale, but I mean, I do believe there'd be enough room there to do some, some grading to provide some, some drainage from that driveway.
Well, I was looking at that the other, he's got a big hole there, too. He's gonna...
Well, last year, last year, you, the city said you had soil for Michael to use to put in there. Michael, why didn't you put that in there? You fill up a hole, you're not gonna have a puddle. Your water's gonna seep away into some soil.
They did not provide soil for me.
Well, there was fill, but it wasn't the fill that you...
Not topsoil.
Yeah.
Well, you, you only needed four, five inches of topsoil, and you're doing your driveway now? So there, you've got your topsoil.
It's about seven inches of topsoil. Yes, I did use my own topsoil to fill that in.
Why did you use topsoil to fill in a hole?
What's that?
How, why did you use topsoil to fill in a hole?
'Cause that's what I was told to use. That's what needs to be done.
No, you need to don't fill in a hole. You can use garbage soil to fill in a hole, and you only need topsoil on top.
No. According to the, this gentleman right here, topsoil is...
Topsoil needs to be eight, 10 inches deep, 12 inches...
No, no, you could fill, like, you're correct. You could fill with whatever, and then put topsoil on top.
I think we're, we're talking about two different issues here. One is between this house and his garage, that's really low.
Yes.
And yet, the water is coming and it is going to, go ahead.
But it's...
I actually filled that in.
It's all filled in now? I saw you were doing some work.
No, it's not filled in. How much did you fill in? Two, three inches, four inches?
No, I filled in over seven inches.
Oh, I don't believe so.
Well, I don't know what to tell you.
It's a deeper hole then. I live there. I drive by it every day.
Yeah, and I live there, and I filled it in. I know how much I put in.
Okay. I'll come over and measure. Another issue I have, when you tore down the single garage, built the double garage, there was a driveway, there was a culvert in that driveway. You took that...
Hold on, hold on. There was no tearing down of a single garage, you're putting up a double garage?
It's a double garage, or no? Or, you redid the garage?
No, I didn't redo it.
There was a culvert in the driveway, then you redid the driveway? There was a culvert in the driveway?
No, that garage was put up before I owned it. That garage was put up...
But your mother owned it then, when you were there living or with her then?
Well, I was how old then?
It is, I wish it was in here.
So...
The point isn't that there's a hole. The point is, water is coming down the road and entering my property, and that needs to be taken care of.
When it comes to the ground tour of your property, there isn't much that, you know, we, we all have our own property, and if it's too low, you, you have to fill it or whatnot. My concern is if it is coming down the road, we, at what point do we need, where do we go with that water?
Well, he's not filled in the, the hole sufficiently. I could go look at it. I mean, it's still not of the same grade as Lonnie's.
The other concern is, even if we do get that water going down to that culvert, how much flooding are we gonna have on the west side, where we have ponding water now? I, I'm sorry, are you Grant?
I'm Grant.
I, Grant.
Sorry, I...
No, that's all right. Grant is the administrator over at the nursing home, and I know you wanted to...
Yeah.
Be in on this conversation.
Yeah. First of all, I mean, if, if you want my input on this, I just wanna say that, I'm assuming this is your property that we're speaking of?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna say that I think that you have every right to think the way that you do. I'm, I'm just looking out for the, for the safety of my, the residents within my building, and I, I just think that the, the, the problem that we're having here already is, is that we're having flooding issues on our side as well, and we, we see that, we see that flooding coming into our, our basement and our, and our facility during these times of, of more water, well, flooding. So...
And Grant?
Yes?
I do agree. That's why I strongly pushed option three here. So that we could relieve, alleviate all of the water in the whole area without putting, spending $560,000 on a paved road.
Yeah. I, I, I just, I simply just wanted to bring up the fact that just because we're moving the water to another, another place, doesn't necessarily remove the flooding, the problem of flooding in itself, because it's still gonna impact somebody no, no matter what. So that's, that's, that's just why I'm here. I just kinda wanted to voice that. Otherwise, I'm here to support any plan that we put into place, really. I just wanna be, I wanna be working with you guys in a part of it, so...
Refresh, refresh our memories for Plan Three.
So Option Three would have been, well, I guess it was, it was kind of, it wasn't necessarily Option Three, it was kinda Option One and Two plus the High Street storm sewer, because either way, Option One would have been just a culvert under Brown Street to alleviate the ponding in that lower, lower area on his yard. That would have discharged water into the lower area on the east side of the road. And then similarly, Option Two, the ditch grading and the driveway culvert would have got water there also. But then there again, the, the High Street storm sewer option was basically to give that water that you're now putting on that lower area someplace to go. So what that would involve would be a connection to the existing storm sewer at the east end of High Street with Manhole. I guess east end of High Street, basically right at the intersection of Redwood Street and Cassaw 33. And then extending that 12-inch storm sewer west to provide basically an, a catch basin or an inlet for that lower area. And then we did also provide, I believe, with that estimate, it would have been, let me double check here. Trying to find it, and again, find it.
That's in the letter dated October 12.
That would have been the October letter, correct?
Yeah.
Option, the bottom option. Sixty, sixty-three thousand.
Right, so that would have just provided an inlet, basically, for, for that, that lower area, 'cause right now, it's just kind of a, it's kinda just a, you know, lower area with no outlet. But then, I believe, in the, in the February estimate, then we included a cost estimate for, for the storm, a stormwater basin in that area, too. So there's not, I guess we don't have a estimate with the High Street storm sewer plus the dry basin separately. But the reason we had included the dry basin in the, in the option to completely pave that street is because at that point, you'd be creating additional impervious surface, and then by MPC would require that you provide some type of stormwater treatment, essentially, so...
Brian, if you were to put that swale down, where, what side would that go down?
It would basically just start at his, at the, at the south side of his driveway, and then it would just provide some, a little bit better drainage from his driveway to that existing 18-inch culvert under the road. And then the water would flow down the west ditch, through the culvert, and then into that lower area.
Well, how does it get from where he lives down to the tracks?
Yeah, I did, the tracks.
But my house runs the other way.
It runs, the water flows south, yep.
My house runs down to the track, and Richard's house, south of you, runs south.
Yeah. And that's why they're saying maybe come across.
Right.
So, the Option Three, where you're talking about adding an extra storm drainage on the end of High Street, on the east end, or west end of High Street, that gets bored in?
We don't, it would be more expensive to bore it. We have, the cost estimate we put together would be to basically dig up the road and then...
Sixty-eight thousand to dig up that road and put in?
And put in the storm sewer, yep. I mean, we're not digging up the whole road, but...
Just that end.
Just, just the one half of the street, correct? Yep. So that would be, yep, the sixty, well, the forty, yeah, sixty-three thousand, yep. That's with, with 10% contingency and design fees.
And that's with replacing the, the street again?
Well, not the entire street, just what was, just what would be needed, yep, yep.
And how big a tile was that?
We had sized it as a 12-inch. At least for, for the option, if you weren't to pave the street, I believe it was a little bit larger if we paved the street, because you'd have, again, more, a little more impervious area and more drainage going there.
What was the cost of paving the street, did you say? I know we had those things.
That was...
That one I did not include. That was later.
That was 570,000 to do, and then, and now there, there again, that included some storm sewer on the north end, because there's a high spot on that road, so you'd need some on both ends. Curb and gutter, all your, you know, all your, basically all your storm sewer and your, and your curb and gutter and your bituminous pavement. I, you know, there's already, the water and sanitary is already in that road. I believe we did include an additional hydrant with those plans as well, because the coverage there isn't ideal, but...
So when it crosses Brown Street again, there's a swale, or there's a type of a, a dry holding pond, you were saying?
We adding, we adding...
And that's where the inlet would be?
Right now, we just, okay, so there's, there's kinda two ways you could go. You could add the High Street storm sewer, and then put an area inlet in there just to drain the existing low area.
Right.
But then, when we had put together plans to pave the whole street, we included some costs in there to dig out a dry basin in order to kind of accommodate that water that, that would be getting to that low area faster because of the additional impervious area that you'd be creating with that.
That's if we paved Brown Street?
Yep. I mean, you could certainly do that without paving as well. I mean, you could still certainly put that dry basin in, dig that out, to provide a little bit additional storage there, if, if, if that's what you'd, you'd wanna do.
No, I, I just, I wanna make sure that we're not causing a bigger problem.
Are you putting storm sewer in the whole street, then?
Which street?
Brown.
What they're looking at is High Street.
Okay.
The storm would extend from the old highway all the way to the west end of High Street, and there would be an inlet there. And then on Brown Street, doing some swaling or whatever to create more water flow in that ditch, to get it to the culvert that crosses right now. So the excess water would be coming out of that culvert, and then hopefully going into the...
And that cost would be, what, 69,000?
For the High Street storm sewer, it was 63,000 with contingency and, and design fee.
So will that dry basin alleviate some of the problems that the, the nursing homes have?
I'm not sure to the extent that you're having problems, but it would, it would help. I mean, it would, more so the outlet would probably help than the dry basin, because right now, that just doesn't, there's nowhere for the water to go besides soak into the ground.
It's not gonna make it worse for them.
The dry basin wouldn't make it worse, no.
Okay.
Well, with an outlet or an inlet down there, I mean, that would make...
Right, I mean, I mean, there's, there's, I guess there's also maybe another option. Without knowing what, what the soils are in there, I mean, the other option would be to maybe run the storm sewer down High Street, put that catch basin in, that inlet in, you know, kind of as an overflow. And then the city could also consider running maybe some perforated tile in there to help kinda get that water out of the ground and into that, into that structure, too. I mean, it's really flat in there, and, you know. So, I mean, that's maybe another, you know, another potential option the city could, could look at. That wouldn't probably add an excessive amount of cost to trench, you know, some six- or eight-inch tile in there.
I don't, I don't see how, I don't, I don't know the extent of this area quite yet. I'm pretty new, so I don't know, I don't know the, how everything drains, or how the buildup and where it builds up, and what can, uh, uh, we help us with our flooding. But I know that we've had, they, I've been kinda filled in in our past problems, that we've had had issues in the past, but I just think that this would only kind of, it would just make those problems worse, and that we'd probably experience more if we were to just give us more, more water on our, on our side of the street. And I understand that that's how the, the water flow is supposed to go into that culvert on the other side of the street, and we're supposed to receive that water. I just, I, I see, I see additional problems for us. But, I mean, we've, we've put up with things in the past, or this, this issue in the past, so I don't, I don't, I don't know how much of, of what we can really do for us at this point, except for just not make it worse, if that makes sense.
Brian, on that street, does it have to be, if we were to choose to put a street in there, would it have to be, why does you, would the cost...
I think we had...
If it were narrower, would it reduce?
I guess it would depend on if you'd wanna do a lot of on-street parking. We had designed a 32-foot wide road for that, for that cost estimate, so that would give you, you know, parking on both sides, I guess.
Are you talking about Brown Street now?
Yeah. Brown Street, yep. So on that option, we designed a 32-foot wide street, which would be similar to, you know, I guess most of the residential streets in town. But, but if you didn't wanna allow parking...
Lonnie Bacon called me, and he said he couldn't make it. He, he, he don't want any water going to the south on his property, 'cause he tied along the house, and he went to the west, hooked up to the county tile. Now, if you're talking to High Street, only chopping up half the street, put the storm sewer line in, that street is 40 years old, and it's time to, to do the whole thing. So, this adds into another project. So, and one more thing, from the Good Milton home, when we added that in, we tied the whole west side of that.
We did.
And that drains into a pond. Now, the pond is over acres of letting. So if you add anymore, you're gonna have to do something there, too.
And that may be a private pond also, or is that public?
Does the west end of High Street flood, like, the old entrance to the back of the...
Way in the back there?
Does that flood right there?
Yes.
Okay. And then you said that Lonnie went west to the county tile?
Yes.
How far is that tile?
Uh, that drains into Tim Woods' land. From this house, I'm guessing 125 feet to the west. Then it goes to the south.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you know, we got a water problem, and the whole thing is like everybody in town. Nobody wants to bite the bullet and say, this is what's gonna cost us to get rid of the problem. You know? That's somebody else doing it.
Okay, council, you hear what's going on?
So, if, cost aside, in a perfect world, if we paved that street, would that fix the problem?
If we put a storm sewer?
It would, I mean, if you included that dry basin, and you'd, you'd also have to still do the High Street storm sewer, 'cause you'd still have to provide an outlet.
That's true.
Right.
So you'd have this street you would be doing, you would have to redo this street. You're talking...
So either way, you would have to redo the High Street storm sewer.
Right. If, if you wanted to provide additional drainage to that lower area, right, you're correct.
And the High Street should be renewed anyway.
That's all we do there.
That sounds like that would be a step one.
Yeah.
But the nursing home doesn't want that street to go all the way through.
No, they didn't back, they bought it that long, a long time ago.
Well, the street wouldn't necessarily have to go all the way through.
I'm sorry, I don't know. It'd be leaving the street as it is, just renewing it.
Right.
With the cur, you know, the...
Putting in a catch basin on the west end.
And the basin, yes.
And that would include...
My sister, if you fill more dirt into your hole, that water would drain away. This year's been exceptionally wet year, and the rest of our lawns don't have a hole in it, and it drains away.
Well, it's easy to be said from the person that's on the hill, draining your water into my land.
Not much of my water drains to your land. My garden part maybe...
It does bring more water, yeah.
So, something else on the other way.
Oh, yeah.
Well, for the purposes of discussion, from my point of view, I think that, that sort of combined, that's option one and two is probably...
The best way to go.
Yeah. If we did that, and in the, does that give us the option in the future if we decide to pave that street?
For, if you were to do the High Street storm sewer and then grade that ditch, yeah, I mean, you'd still certainly do, I mean, yeah, you could still pave it in the future, and it wouldn't, you wouldn't be hamstringing yourself in any way to do that, no.
So, we're tiled west of the assistant, of the nursing home?
Yes.
That open field is tiled?
Yes.
And that's going to the pond on the other side of the old highway, right? 'Cause if they tiled that and brought that into that catch basin on that High Street addition, you'd have two sources to get that water out from behind the nursing home.
If they spent that 69,000, would that...
Sixty-three?
Or sixty-three, would that screw up anything at the... I mean, eventually, there's gonna be a street in there.
Brown Street. No, I mean, the, the 63,000 one would have nothing.
It'd be wasted money, is what I'm saying.
It would be spent, I mean, it would be money spent on High Street, essentially. It would have very little impact on Brown Street. I mean, besides that minor grading work that you might do, I mean, but that's relatively small compared to the overall cost, that little bit of grading work.
But it would potentially help with the water around Brown Street.
Yes, yep.
You know, and we're not just talking about the water coming from Brown Street. There has always been an issue with standing water on the west end here. Most of the summer, I would say half the summer, you couldn't mow.
Right.
I mean, the nursing home had that problem, it goes way back here.
Yep, there's just nowhere for it to go, I mean, yep.
So, council?
Can, we couldn't go from, we couldn't tile from back there and take that to the county tile?
Could we tile that to the county tile?
Could we drain that between Grant, or, excuse me, between High and Brown, that portion of ours? Could we tile that and take that back to the county tile?
I could give you that, and I don't know, talk to the county.
Because if you did that, you could drop a catch basin on the other side of Brown, it's the same shot, and it might be a cheaper route to go.
I totally agree with you.
Yeah, it might, might depend on whatever you have for elevation to work with, and...
Obviously, but it just, it's another idea. Cause tiling's pretty inexpensive compared to-
Boring. So you're saying tiling on the west side of Brown Street?
This is tiled right now and this is going over to the catch basin.
Right.
There's a county tile right back here.
Right.
We take it right from here, tile this up, take it right back a lot, that property, but a catch basin on that side of the ditch, take it to the county tile.
Would the capacity of their tile have some-
That's, Gordy's gonna have to talk to the county, obviously, or somebody to talk to the county.
Filling up somebody else's tile.
Yeah, it's, and it's just an idea, it's not a, you know, I, Julie's right.
There's a lot of utilities under that road, correct?
A lot of it on the east side.
So if they tiled, can they bore under that, or does that have to be?
Mm-mm.
It's gonna have to go deep.
Yep.
I think that is a good idea, but, um, also, the utilities are over there and that would be a-
No, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just trying to think outside the box.
Yeah, no, and then, like you say, the other thing would be the, the drop, I think it's actually going uphill, but-
Tiling, that's, they use a laser-
Did you ever check into it, whoever farms that, can you hook onto a tile in that field and make your water?
We don't, but it keeps coming back.
In that field?
I'm not sure, again, I mean, what, what is there, do we look at, here on the county ex- tile?
Last I heard, somebody rented that land?
Just an idea.
I don't, I don't know who owns that or rents it, or-
It's a tiling, it's fairly expensive.
Or how, how would you get tiled in there?
That's shooting, ought to be shooting, right?
Adrianne.
The issue's not going to go away.
No, and like I said, like I said, Gordy said this is, it might not go down into-
This is higher ground over here, too.
Well, to me, the, the thing is to put in a street, and I'm not gonna force anybody to put in a street, because apparently, they don't want it, but I mean, that would take care of the situation.
Well, then open up the railroad track, too.
We can't.
Well.
We can, we just have-
We would like to.
Maybe then in the street, put all that money into it?
Yeah.
We can't.
Love to be country out there.
Are you suggesting extending High Street to Brown Street, is what you're?
Yes.
No.
No.
The streets wouldn't change, the storm sewer would get updated and the street would get updated on High Street. So that would get rid of more water from the west side, um-
Actually, I think what Peter's talking about is actually paving Brown Street, Curban Gare.
Oh, okay.
And then tying that into-
Well, then you're gonna put storm sewer, too.
Yes.
Yep.
Which, rough estimate on something like that.
Well, well, no, the storm sewer we had included in, it's part of that five hundred and, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that we had for that, uh, for the pavement. There's, there's, there'd be relatively little, little storm sewer, because it'd basically just be a couple of inlets on the north end and then a couple inlets, basically where that existing culvert goes under the road. Um, well, I take that back, because I, I do recall that we talked to the, um, we talked to the railroad and they wouldn't want the storm sewer outletted into their ditch, so you would probably have to either pipe it or you'd have to dig a swale along the north side of the, of the city property in order to get that water basically to the existing pond.
Right.
So, um-
I move we go with the combination of option one and two, the High Street storm sewer, costing a cost of sixty-three thousand one hundred dollars.
No, just to clarify, that would not be the full reclamation of High Street. I mean, we could certainly put together cost estimates for the full width, um, you know, all the utilities, too, and then maybe, you know, see, see what you think about that. Of Gordy, I mean, if you think it needs to be done, so.
It's time, we got, one dig up half the street, you just, you'd be back in a couple of years.
Well, that road isn't too bad, though, only up where the semis turn in.
Where the semis turn into good sand, that's-
But that's because of the semis, I mean, that's-
Well, it's only a five-ton street.
Just trying to get something going.
Trying to be fair here, then you're, you're putting the burden on all the people on High Street. I'm saying, these guys got a problem, you're paying for it.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I'm, gotta be something equitable here somewhere.
Well, yeah, so I still think to alleviate the problem, if we're not gonna have all the rain we've had this year, if he would fill this hole in a little more, another ten inches, we wouldn't have it.
How about I amend my motion? I'll leave it at that, but, um, pending cost estimates on redoing High Street, as, I mean, if we'd have to resurface.
Option three, pending cost estimates from ISG regarding High Street.
Yes.
So, so-
Let me, I wanna-
Yeah, just clarify.
... clarify on that, too. So you'd be talking about redoing High Street completely. We have a storm catch basin on the west end of High Street to drain or to catch the water and maybe some tiled fingers going out into that low area. And then, basically, on Brown Street?
I'm not writing all that.
You would be swelling the ditch more, so it runs more towards that culvert?
That ditch grading, correct. Um, I'm not sure, now there again, if, if he's filling in his yard, I'm not sure if that is maybe necessary.
Okay.
Um, but I mean, it, it would probably be a very minimal cost. Um, I believe previously, on the two thousand and five plans, they did show a culvert was under that driveway, um, and I'm not sure if that was taken out or buried at that time, but, uh-
That wouldn't be our expense under the driveway, that'd be his expense?
That, I'm, that I'm not clear on. Um, it's, it is within the right of way, so.
I'm guessing there would be a levy portion of this also, as a rock.
We'd have to have public hearings on all of this.
Are you putting water and sewer in there, too, Gordy, on that street, when you rebuild it?
Well, right now, on the High Street, um-
Do you have water and sewer?
Troy's got trouble with the hydrant when they flush.
Mm-hmm.
They're losing pressure, you know? If you're gonna dig it up, then you gotta replace that man. Like Troy?
Yeah, you have told the other day that, uh-
This adds more and more.
One of them lost pressure and maybe we weren't, we weren't, not very good pressured on there, the way it is. That's probably us.
It just don't quit?
I'm just being so polite.
Yeah, yeah, you know, that is the problem. I'm almost ready to say, let's just get that area filled in and see what happens after that, but, um, it's up to you, council. We can leave as is and hopefully, you can get enough fill in there and the water drains away, or we could look at that third option, um, which is adding up quickly.
Well, it doesn't matter how much fill you add, the water's still coming into my property, right? I mean, it'll flow into the driveway before it goes down the road right now, I mean, not all of it.
You've only got, you've only got Richard, Richard Anderson's small pot that's bringing it, the rest of your land is bringing it to it.
It's, it's not, but I'm not here, I'm gonna keep on hearing the street.
I'm going to go, but I have one other issue I'd like to bring up.
Yes.
That the weed inspector sees that he kills his creeping Charlie, that has invaded the neighbor's lawn, three, four feet, and I'm holding responsible for cleaning that up also.
Now I'm getting a tax.
Charlie is very invasive weed. Uh, the nursing home also has it right across the place from me.
Okay, we're gonna stick to the water issue now, you can bring that up at, at another time, though. Um, so, I'm gonna call a question, what does council want to do?
I guess I don't have a good answer.
I guess I'm, I'm in favor of this sixty-three or-
Who's paying for it?
Who pays for the sixty-three?
Who's paying for it and who's benefiting from it?
Well, part, the part of High Street that is reconstructed would be assessed.
To who?
Part of it to the people who own property along High Street.
Okay.
Um, part of it would be levied, there'd be a levy portion of it-
To the city.
-that everybody in the town would pay for. Um, and then the utility funds would pay for the rest, the storm sewer fund does not have sufficient funds, so that might have to be levied or borrowed from another fund.
And who benefits from it?
The whole area benefits from it.
No, Brown Street gets direct benefit and somebody else pays for it. So, as far as I'm concerned, it's the whole shooting match down Brown Street or none?
Well, it's not necessarily true, because you have water problems like we talked about at the Good Samaritan and at the, uh, apartment complex also.
Not disagreeing.
There's a motion on the cable.
Just saying for me, it's all or none.
Uh, there's a motion for the option three, if there's not a second.
The motion, option three, pending cost estimates from ISG regarding High Street, is what I have recorded.
If there's no a second to it, motion dies. Is there a second? Okay, that motion dies. Is there any other options that council would be willing to do at this time?
Like I say, it's my feeling, I think Dale's and maybe Lyle's, maybe I'm speaking for them. I think the street should be put in.
I do, too.
It's the only town, one of the, a whole city, it's one, the only one, we don't have a s- street.
Well, it's not the only one, but I'm with you.
Where else?
Uh, Sleepy Hollow.
That's not in the city.
That's not ours.
That's all county.
Okay. All right, if we're not going to be doing anything at this time, I don't know, what is the process, um?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
So how do, how do we move forward? I mean, what, what happens now?
What does happen now?
Nothing.
For his recourse, there's-
Nothing, nothing.
I mean, storm sewer removal for my bill, right now, that's as good as option of any. If I'm gonna be paying for my some pump to pump other people's water out of my property and not having a storm sewer, why should I be paying for it on my bill?
And that's something the council's talked about.
That's a good call.
Well, then, the ordinance will have to be amended, because this ordinance states that it is for current and future storm sewer projects, that everyone in city limits, that's what they pay for. And that will be a future project someday. But you guys can do what you want.
Okay, we have other things we, we need to, to move on at this time. I don't know what to tell you, Mike, um, other than hopefully, that filling in that low area is gonna make a difference, it's not gonna be going in.
So do I need to come back next month to bring this up again, or I, I don't understand how I move forward with this problem?
What would you recommend? I'm, I'm looking at you, Aaron.
If I let you, I would see if you get tiled to the west and hook up to the field tile. That, I would check into that, by the way.
I think you're gonna find-
Maybe if you get checked with Lonnie, maybe he'll let you tie in with him. I, I don't know, I ain't gonna say nothing for you.
And I know we've been back and forth on this, but if I'm paying for a storm sewer, I should be getting it.
Don't disagree, that's why I said, the whole project or none.
That's what I agree.
Cause the way I look at it is, the city is required-
Nobody else on the street, on the street wants it either.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
You have to get them to want it.
The way, the way the law is set is we are required to provide water, sewer, and storm sewer. And the only way we can do, solve this, is to put an entire street in over there. It's the only solution, for the city.
So what do I have to do to, to put in a, an opening statement or whatever about removing the storm sewer charge from my bill?
I would say, Aaron, would, would he have to have an attorney, or can he contact you? Uh, does he send something to the city, a request? What?
He could put in a request, but it sounds like the ordinance says that it's applicable to current and future, so. What's he in a difficult position to try to, to waive that for somebody?
And I don't think anybody wants this to be some small claims court thing, but this is ridiculous.
It's an issue, that's for sure.
It's not easy to solve.
I can put this whole street in.
That's the city's obligation, is to put the whole street in. That's our solution. Do what?
To do what?
I, I don't know, but maybe just move ahead, I mean, we could, we could sit here until ten o'clock.
Yeah, and we will, because there's no answer.
Many levels, but-
We could have water and sewer meet again, I, I just, I don't know.
Why?
And discuss what?
Yeah.
I mean, is what, discuss what, would you like discussed at a committee meeting? Waiving the fee?
Waiving the fee?
Because we can't do that, and so, unless they change the ordinance-
How much is the fee, Jenny?
Eight dollars and ten cents a month.
Eight dollars? Hundred bucks a year, yeah.
You could put a request in for that and that could be talked about at a council meeting.
I can contact Jenny about requesting that?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, we are going to move on.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of your time.
All right, um, we have the four fifteen North Hennepin sale property with steel beds. I have the beds right here, uh, Aaron, I'm assuming, I just open them up and... Do I say the names of the people that are bidding on it?
Just the amount, isn't it?
So just the amounts?
Do the amounts.
Okay, just the amounts. Uh, we have one bid here for twenty thousand one hundred dollars.
You're recording him?
Yep.
Mm-hmm. The next bid is for eleven thousand five hundred. Um, and I do have a question after that, too. The back taxes, there were nineteen hundred dollars owed, that is paid, we have paid that.
It's a clear title.
We had to pay that, so you, whoever bids on it would get a clear title.
I just said it's eleven five, not five hundred.
Oh, eleven thousand five dollars, I'm sorry, not eleven thousand five hundred. And the last. The last bid is for seven thousand seven hundred two dollars. So, seven thousand seven hundred two, eleven thousand five, or twenty thousand one hundred.
Is the high bid in conformity, it's just a street? What, do they have any conditions or anything?
There are no conditions, it's as is.
Looks to be acceptable.
Yeah. So, council, those are the three bids. What was the total amount that we had into it?
Eighteen five plus the back taxes, plus the-
About twenty.
Twenty.
I make the motion to accept the bid of twenty thousand.
I'd second that.
It's actually twenty thousand one hundred, but-
One hundred, twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand one hundred.
Happily second that.
There's a motion made to accept the bid for twenty thousand one hundred. Is there a second?
Julie's seconded.
Oh, who seconded? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Julie seconded the motion, um, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. When do people get to know who actually?
The winning, yeah.
Okay, so the winning bid went to, um, went to Dave and Lori Treblehorn. Okay, is there anything else we need with this?
So if you wanna give me the-
Pardon?
Information on that.
Yep, I will, I'll get that to you tomorrow.
We appreciate everyone bidding on it. You wanna hand that to them?
Sure.
Thank you.
There's almost the-
Was it? No?
Nope. I don't think they did anything, there was no extra, nothing else called out.
She had paid for one dumpster that they dumped, and then I had paid for one dumpster to clean out the garbage on the outside.
I, that's what I noticed when I drove by, the front of it looked-
I just didn't want it at least, yeah. But, other than that, the door was locked and walked out.
Okay. We move on to resolution approving the sale of the property to Cody and Callie Lovrude.
Three oh three Spruce Circle.
I get a new neighborhood.
Yes, it'd be the one next to the neighborhood park.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and-
So moved.
A motion made.
Second.
And seconded by Julie. Um, is there any further discussion?
Is it going again?
Next to the neighborhood park.
Right next to the park, kitty corner from me.
Oh, okay.
So there'll be two in there now, so you'll move the snow just a little bit further north.
Is that the same one that Aaron and, uh?
No.
Different lot?
Different lot, yeah. They're in the one Reese's own, bought the one that they're in.
Was that the one they bought? Okay.
Any further discussion?
Sorry.
That's right.
I think they're on the street side, aren't they?
Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
No, but that one's pending. No, but that one's pending.
Yeah, they're still getting me plans for that, so.
But they bought the lot, or no?
They haven't paid for it till the plans are approved. Which makes sense. And I told Cody and Callie, too, that get me the plans and I'll have the zoning administrator approve them.
Saves that backing up the train.
Right, yes.
Okay, the Joe Freeman sanitary sewer.
Dollar, right?
No, I didn't get the dollar. He has not gotten back to me, so that we can do when he ever, whenever he gets back to me.
Okay. The AMI metering.
This was discussed at the work session, and the consensus at that time was to move ahead with it. We just need action. You know, I just need approval from you guys to go ahead with bidding out the... Yeah, the installation costs and moving forward with the project.
I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
And seconded by Lyle. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Declare excess property for sale.
There's eight chairs with wheels on them that the library has that are taking up space. And we'd just like to declare them excess property and sell them, so.
Sell them where and how?
Put a ad in the paper.
Facebook.
Facebook, yeah.
Set a base price on them, or are you looking for a bid lot on them? What are you gonna do?
I don't know. I'd have to ask Mandy how she wants them. They're library chairs.
Okay, so they own them?
Yeah. Well, the city owns them. The city ensures that.
Do they know value of them? I mean, are they?
Little or nothing. They've been here since...
All right.
Oh, my gosh. Probably twelve years or more, so.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made. And seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Forfeit vehicle, an '08 Chevy Aveil.
This was a forfeit vehicle that we had thought about keeping at one time to use for a transport vehicle to and from conferences, et cetera. And it's quite small. You're not going to fit a lot of firemen in there, so they weren't real interested in it. And now, I don't, I think it needs a battery, and it's taken up a spot in the garage, and our storage space is limited the way it is, so they'd like... The guys want me to put it on to get rid of it.
Is it a piece of junk, or is it worth something?
Maybe five to a thousand, maybe.
Well, whoever wants to bid on it can check.
I mean, I've never seen the car, so I was wondering what kind of shape. About what I'm imagining.
Yeah. So we go ahead and sell like we have the other ones?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll back it. I'll take some pictures of it and put it on Facebook.
See a bid again?
Yep, yep.
Okay, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
So moved.
Seconded by Lyle. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, set date, canvass the election votes.
We usually do it the first Monday after election, but that's holidays, so I thought Tuesday. We have to have it, I think, between three and fourteen days after the election. We won't get the results from the county till probably Friday. Tuesday at five, it's gonna last about five minutes, so.
So the thirteenth?
What do you need here?
Just a quorum.
I can't. I won't be able to be here. You can be here?
Yeah.
Can you be here, Lyle?
What's the date again?
Tuesday the thirteenth at five.
Next Tuesday.
I can call you. Pete, can you be here?
So far.
Well, if I can't get a quorum, I'll let you know, and we can reschedule it, so.
That would really screw up the county if we can't get it.
We need to get it. We need to get it.
Don't we say that five o'clock, right?
Five o'clock. That works for everyone. Okay, and we have Dean Conklin. Yep, you're up next.
Would you like to talk more about water?
Sure. Cool, clear water.
And I want you to know, I'm gonna vote for you.
You don't have to, believe me, you don't have to.
Write it in. It's Mickey Mouse.
Well, I want you to know that when I talk about my land, it's a land that I own north of Eighth Street. And when I talk about tile, I'm talking about your tile through underneath my land to the ditch. I have owned that land for thirty-five, plus or minus a couple of years. And this is 2017, 2018. I have got nothing, no crop off of that land. I want you to bear in mind that that tile that you put in Eighth, in Oak Lane... Handled, I could handle that okay. But since then, you have added all of Linden Lane and three cul-de-sacs. It's the tile that you have from Roger Osborne's to the ditch isn't handling it. And it just will not take all the additional water that you have produced from Linden Lane and three cul-de-sacs, including yours. Anyway, financially, yeah. I've lost a couple grand. Do I like that? No. And I have been renting it, cash renting it, for about six or seven years. And of course, if you can't get a crop into it, I don't get any cash rent. So for the last two years, I've gotten nothing. I would... Did you all see a letter that we got from, did they all see it?
Yep.
Okay.
They have the letter and the email from Brian regarding the cul-de-sac.
Okay, the fellow from your...
Yep, he's still here.
Oh, you're still here?
Yep.
Are you the guy?
Yep, I'm the guy.
Okay.
What, when you observed it, you were not told of the additional street and cul-de-sacs. And that land is classified by state soils, people, is classified as muck. That doesn't sound very good, does it? Why didn't he call it cream and sugar or something? I don't know. Farmers, many farmers have the same kind of land that's really muck, but a farmer calls it peat. Peat is brown and peat burns. Does it make me the smartest man in the world, but I want you to know, I have a degree in agriculture. I have had lots of credits in soils and crop production. And I cannot stand losing... Profit, some money from my land a third year. And I'll guarantee you, next spring, come spring, it's gonna be the same thing. You have got to consider, seriously consider, getting satisfactory tile from the... I want to call it the pit behind Roger Osborne's. All of the storm soil, water from all over goes into a... Into a, I'm gonna call it a water storage area, right below Roger Osborne's. And from there, it goes by your tile, a twelve-inch tile, to the ditch. That tile to the ditch has been hurt. Do you know what, do any of you know what a tile blowout is? A tile blowout? No? I'm gonna say six or seven years ago... My renter said, Dean, you've got a tile blowout down there. It's right over your tile from Roger Osborne's to the ditch. It, when the pressure of the water above gets great enough, it'll find a weak spot in your tile and blow out. And so what I have there, what I had there, I filled it in. What I had was a pit about five foot deep and about ten feet across the top. In other words, the water pressure blew out onto my property and left me a big hole. When the water goes out of your tile, some water goes back, because your tile is a permeable tile. It has, it has holes in it. It's not a solid tile. It's a permeable tile. And it's a perforated tile, is what I want to say. It blew out, water came out, but water goes down again. And when it goes down, it's bound to carry some silt and soil with it. So your tile from Roger Osborne's to the ditch is not certainly operating at a hundred percent.
So that's perforated tile way through there? I thought that was...
I can't really tell you without it being televised. All I can say is on the upstream end and the structure, it's a CMP. It doesn't... I believe it was CMP. It doesn't look to be perforated in that structure. The outlet I couldn't see because it was submerged when I was out there, so I... It's really hard for me to say without having it televised. I mean, we don't have any...
I'm ninety percent sure.
At least I've never seen construction documents on when that tile was put in, so if there was some as-built records of when that... Whether you want to call it a tile or a storm sewer, I guess it really depends on if it is or is not perforated.
You commented on not knowing for sure if it was sized, you thought it was sized correctly to handle the cul-de-sac... In Linden Lane when it was built, because the stub was there. But you didn't get a chance to talk to some of the property owners, a couple of them there, about overflow, so that tile... From Linden Lane and the cul-de-sac runs down to this other tile? Is that...
So that whole new development up there that...
You said something about the overflow water.
Right, so there's a structure at the bottom, kind of the bottom of the slope there between those two properties. I guess what I'm saying is, is the storm sewer runs to that structure, and then from there, it runs to the ditch from a twelve-inch tile. We didn't do a hydraulic analysis up there or model anything. When I was getting out and let, I was saying, the best way to know if that twelve-inch tile is adequately sized is, is it ever overflow at that structure?
It does.
Because if it does overflow in that structure, then you wouldn't be getting some surface runoff onto the property. But, you know, there's a chance that, it would be good to know, I guess, also, you know, what size vent does it overflow? I mean, the city sewer, if it was a seven-inch rainfall, it's not designed for that, you know? I mean, if it's a four-inch rainfall, that's about a ten-year design storm now, but chances are back then, they probably designed it for a five-year storm or less, so. It is a little bit, a little bit odd. I believe the pipe that comes into the structure is like a fifteen-inch, maybe, or an eighteen-inch. I'd have to look back. And then the outlet pipe is a twelve-inch, so that is a little bit odd, that the outlet pipe would be a little bit smaller than the inlet pipe.
I have talked to one of the storm owners, and that is an issue where it does come bubbling back up.
The amount of hard surface area that contributes to the storm sewer... Don't quote me on this. It's roughly between three and four acres of hard surface. And what happens when water hits a hard surface? It's gone. And it reaches, it reaches the city tile and the pit below Roger Osborne's too quickly. It's fast. I would dare say that a gallon of water and cul-de-sac within twenty minutes, and it's back of Roger Osborne's.
There's a manhole there, Dean?
Pardon?
There's a manhole there?
It's like a corrugational structure. It's not like a concrete manhole.
I think you should talk to those two property owners and ask them, how often does this happen?
Yeah, I certainly...
I don't want to misquote either one of them, but...
I can certainly talk to them. I think in my letter, I left it up to the city to maybe talk to them, but I could certainly talk to them if I can get some...
And how big should a tile be from Roger Osborne's to the ditch? We have people called engineers that can engineer...
I didn't design the storm sewer.
That can determine the amount of water that goes with a four-inch rain or a six-inch rain.
I'm just saying that, I didn't design the existing storm sewer. I'm just saying, somebody did at some time, I assume, designed it, and I'm not sure to what standard they designed it.
And it was good when it handled only, only Oak Lane. I was able to farm through.
Okay.
But we've added, we've added so much more.
Let's, do we want Gordy to look at, or Troy to be looking at this? Or should we have Brian take a look at it, talk to the property owners, and try to get a better idea of what?
I think we should just have Brian take a look at it. Check out what kind of tile is in there? How big the tile is, if it's undersized?
We would have to get a televising company to take a look at it. But the issue there is, is, as I mentioned, when I was out there with Troy looking at it, the outlet of the tile is submerged. So if the tile's full of water, you might not be able to really see much anyways. So, and the reason I point that out is because that, the size of the pipe might actually be enough to handle the water that's going through there. However, if it's submerged, then it's gonna have to get some head pressure there in order to outlet. So, really, you're kind of restricted by the outlet. If your outlet's not free, it's because maybe the ditch needs to be cleaned, or the culvert set at Eighth Street is too high, maybe. You know, I'm not sure how that ditch was designed. Maybe it is...
But let me say this. Storm sewer water is your problem. It's not my problem. Now, how you get it, how you get it to the ditch, I don't care. I'll be silly and say, take, just a minute. Take it to the ditch with a tanker. I don't care. But the water is still, storm sewer water is your water. It's not mine. And I like it underneath my soil, but not over the top of it.
So were you saying that?
It doesn't take a degree from Harvard to figure that out.
But were you saying that when the ditch fills up, it's not handling the...
I'm saying that you can make it, you can make it as big a pipe as you want, but if it's submerged at the end and it doesn't, and the water can't get out of the pipe, then it's just gonna sit in there.
It all depends on elevations.
Right, yeah. You need head pressure, but if the ditch is full, you're not gonna probably get enough head pressure to get that water out of there either. I mean, I guess it's a bit concerning to me that the ditch, when I was there, did not appear to be flowing, and the pipe outlet was submerged.
The ditch has been high.
All summer.
All summer.
Right, so I'm not sure if the ditch needs to be cleaned in order for it to flow better, or if maybe it's designed to hold water.
I think Troy talked to the county at one point about cleaning the ditch.
I did talk to the county. It was on like a five-year plan of getting cleaned.
And they missed it.
I signed some papers, which I knew.
Because it's held water for...
Speed of the process, but that's where we're at. He said it was on a five-year plan of getting the whole ditch cleaned.
How many years, this year, again, the water flows over Eighth Street? You've had barriers up?
At least three times this summer.
Yeah.
But I think it's coming over the ditch. I think a ditch can handle the water coming from the north and the west.
But it's not coming on the ditch onto my land.
I think so.
Oh, can't be. I've seen the water two feet lower in the ditch than on my land. And incidentally, no water can come onto my land from the north, from the Treblehorn farm. I have made a dike there. I have put up a barrier.
Is there some elevation by the ditch from your land?
Yeah, there is.
When the ditch was dug, there's what we call a spoilage bank. Am I correct? The spoilage bank, when they dug the ditch, it wasn't put in your backyard or anybody else's backyard. It was all put on my side, which is fine. And so, yes, no water can flow from my land, flooded land, into the ditch. It can't get in there because of that spoilage. And it's okay.
So typically, what a solution to that would be, that would be to put in a side inlet, which would basically be right at the edge of that. Basically, the toll of that spoil bank, you'd put in like an opening intake, and then you'd provide a connection to the ditch. We do, we do hay drainage projects, I mean, multiple, multiple projects at a time, and that's, I mean, that's what's done for us. That'd be, you know, a common solution. But there again, if you have, if you have a side inlet and you have a ditch that's full of water...
It's gonna feed back.
You know what I mean? It's kind of the same problem.
I had that in my basement. We had that flood that last time? It went into the nursing home. My pump was running, and my water wasn't going out anywhere, because I have my drainage to the swale out in the back. So I went outside the house where it goes into the thing. I pulled that pipe off, and it went out into the yard. My basement was down in about five minutes. Because the pressure, the pump wouldn't press, push against that water that was in the swale, you know?
So the way I see it, are we looking at two issues here? Are we looking at one is the tile that the city has, it's running down between the two properties? Is that undersized to handle coming off the cul-de-sacs in Linden Lane? And the second problem is the swale by the ditch, you know? Even if we get our water out of there, is that water still gonna stand in yours? Then it's a matter of putting in this money.
As I said, I'm getting no water from Treblehorn, because I've dyked it.
Right. And I can't speak to there being a tile blowout or not without it being inspected. I do understand that...
I know where the tile blowout is, believe me. I know.
And I mean, and the city could possibly dig it up and check for themselves, or they could have it televised. I mean, I just, I didn't witness it, or I haven't seen any televising of it, so I, you know, I can't speak to it.
Yeah, it seemed to me that if there's evidence of it there, it would be easy to find.
Right. By televising, televising it. I think we, it is an issue. I do know... I do know that...
I disagree on a tile blowout. I know what it is.
With the tile coming in from Linden Lane, the cul-de-sacs, I know that that bubbles up. That's why I'd like you to talk to those property owners and see how often, how heavy of a rain is that causing that?
Well...
And then...
The moral of the story is, I've got a conservation plan with the USDA, and I said that between May 15th and June 30th, I'm going to cede that land. Well, what's my chances?
Yeah.
What's my chances? I'll try, and then it has to be moved.
Well, I think one of the biggest issues are going to be the ditch. They're going to have to clean that ditch. We don't have enough fall for any of our water. That's... Yes.
I have land on that ditch, too, and Dean knows that that can be...
Yes.
Cleaning your ditches and you're going to help with that.
But you don't think so? Is there not enough fall?
The culvert's already above the water.
Yeah, it is. On Eighth Street, it is.
Hundred feet deep, and it's not going to go through the ditch because it's already dry.
Well, I'll tell you, for the last two years, it's cost me $1,000 a year. And am I tired of it? I'm damn sick and tired of it because I've had crop off of there for 35 years in a row.
It's gotten bad worse in the last 10 years, and I think it's pattern-tiling. Oh, that way is exactly what's doing it. I know what's doing it.
You think it's coming from the north?
Yeah.
Well, from way out, way out west, north.
Coming in through the ditch and filling that ditch and...
Because the first 30 years, we had that, and we never had it going. And now I've had four feet of water, and I said many times every year, a couple times a year.
Incidentally, are you aware of the fact that the plumbing... Man, gee, the plumber, the electrician, excuse me, Dale Jackson, he actually had the water, the city fire department, at one time, I think, I'm going to say about four years ago, come out and prepare to sandbag so that the water didn't get in his basement. Now, that's how high it got.
Yeah.
And Roger Osborne called Dale and said, "By the way, your boat is floating past my backyard, floating my backyard." So...
Okay, so we need to get started on this. So I want to make sure Brian is clear as to what we're asking him to do.
Yeah, I'll speak to the landowners that are next to that structure and see what they're seeing.
Okay. And then are you going to televise that line going out?
I could talk to Empire about putting a quote together to get that line televised.
I don't...
But like I say, I don't know.
You think that that 12-inch... You think that 12-inch line will carry what...
Like I say, I haven't sized the pipe. I'm not sure. I didn't do the...
Well, my big concern, too, is like you were saying, that the ditch is filling up already. Where are we going to go with this water? Where does it go? And if it's coming from up north because of pattern-tiling, no matter what we do, it's not going to eliminate the problem. But I want to get started. We want to take a look at it.
I guess what I'm saying, what I was saying in my letter is, you know, if there is damage to that tile, then yes, it could be seeping into the ground. But if there is no damage to the tile, then the only water that would be coming from the city storm sewer would be surface flow from when that structure overflows.
Right.
Otherwise, if it is, if it's a perforated tile, I guess that's different. But if it's non-perforated, if it's just a pipe...
Yeah.
Then there's no way that, you know, unless it's damaged, that there's water coming from the city storm sewer onto his property unless it's surface flowing from an overflow of that structure.
My point is, the quantity has more than doubled by adding water, storm sewer.
Right, but if there's no way for the water to get from the pipe into the ground, then that doesn't matter.
Well, that's what we're going to be checking on. I, you know, figure that out, what kind of piping and so on. But I do know there is... I agree with what you said. We're having more and more issues down there.
James Ray, I guess, who hit water sitting, that should have been going along a time ago because, but it's sitting on our side, it's across, it's sitting there, too, for some reason. That's how it's not working.
South of Eighth Street.
South of Eighth Street.
South, yeah.
Are those culverts under the highway in that Eighth Street? Are they way too small?
I can't...
Big enough. They're just, they're too high.
They sit high.
How about those culverts?
Sit off the bottom.
Are they capable of letting the water flow through?
The highway one? It's not, it's already, the ditch is below the culvert.
Yeah, it's below the culvert.
You can't get it unless...
No, but does the water pass through that culvert?
Yeah.
It got better since the ruraler did something with their...
Well, they put a new culvert in, too.
It's gotten better, but I got water on my side and my, on my side, too.
Well, I want to determine if the county has to be involved in this or...
If it's acting like a dam, you know?
Well, it does have...
Can't get a look in. All right.
Next, Dean.
If there's issues with that Eighth Street culvert, then the county would need to be contacted.
All right.
If improvement was going to be done, that's a different process generally when it comes to county ditches.
But I think even Eighth Street won't help because once it gets a... Well, I don't know, a few years ago, it was up about a foot and a half of the highway. It was full. The whole thing was full.
I've seen it go over the road plenty of times.
I went out through my boat, it was 26 feet deep out there, and my locator sat in the middle. There was water out there.
That's a lot. Did you have a... We have lake land there then, right? Property?
Don't tell the assessor. Don't.
You know, maybe that's what we need to do, is take a look at this lake again. Create it.
My last word to you people is, storm sewer water is your problem. It's not.
Right.
Yep, we heard.
I like the lake idea, though.
Stocked it. Piranhas.
Yeah. All right, we're going to move along here.
And one other thing. We have had, I have had some trouble with snow melting back at the Chris Houston place, the 10, 20, 30 loads of snow dumped that runs down. And this nice guy said, "Okay, we're not going to dump any more snow there to melt and run into my land." You're a nice guy, you know?
Yeah. We get that all the time. We get that all the time.
Too nice to...
Come on. All right, moving on.
I said that just to make you feel good.
Good. Thank you, Dean. City Administrator's report.
It's Tuesday. Wait, that's tomorrow.
I met with the DNR. Troy and I met with the DNR. He got called away on a fire call about our aquifer. I have some information on that in my office if you want to read it. Basically, they're looking for us to put in an observation well, and I'm not necessarily sure we need it at this point. Kaden came out to me with Troy, Gordy, and myself to discuss our substation, electrical project, service territory, and our ability to serve a 5-megawatt data center. He thinks we don't have enough capacity to serve a 5-megawatt data center at this point. We would have to do some adding on. He said also that most 5-megawatt data centers don't use 5 megawatts. They only use one or two, but that's neither here nor there at this point.
What's that, that one? I'm not familiar.
Data center? Well, Pete can probably talk more about that.
Been some fishing around. It may be a data center could be coming in our city one day. So the question is, do we have enough power capability if it would be?
So we discussed how we would serve that if the opportunity came to town. Troy and I met with Mike Willetts with MMUA to introduce him to the On-Site, On-Demand. I did get him signed up today. He's going to the Transformer School in December. That will give him an overview of the previous year and what the program is all involved. We still have not had a lot of interest in the job postings, so the deadline is Friday at 5:00. And I attended a League of Minnesota Cities Regional Meeting in Mankato. The topics this year were regional economic vitality, legislative updating conflict and problem-solving techniques. And I have more information on those topics as well, if you would like. Our housing group was finalizing the Minnesota Healthy Heartland Homes website, and the Lafayette Lift Trucks project fell through, Ben Bar Business in Lafayette, and the Winter Motel Project also fell through, so...
That motel fell through?
Yes.
Oh. First report.
Did not because of that grant?
No, it was not. The seller now would like more money.
Okay.
That's what you knew about that.
I love that look.
Yes.
I just know that kind of hoops they jump through already.
Yes, yes. But they are, they did inform me they're working on other projects in town, and they look forward to working with the city on future projects.
Good. EDA?
I spent 54 and a half hours on EDA-related projects. I've been working on this business retention and expansion course that runs through November 28th. And the other project I worked on was the Workforce Housing Grant. It was a good exercise in grant applications. There were issues with the grant before this happened, but I think we could have worked through them. So, but now I know more what they're looking for, too. So if we apply for it again next year, I'll be better prepared. They're working on broadband day on the hill again. It'll be bigger this year. We met with the Innovation Center to discuss some programming, but that kind of fell through. I attended a D meeting in Mankato regarding a program that they're rolling out in Sibley County regarding succession planning. They're going to have a website to help businesses, people who own businesses in the area who want to retire and sell their business to help them possibly train in people to take over their business. And so we wouldn't lose, like, say, Heartland Collision. If we'd have known, this would be a good candidate for a program like that. And then we did get an estimate on the Bauer Building, and the EDA did act on having Paulie and Randy clean out the building, so they're going to start cleaning that out, too. So maybe we can move that at some point.
Do you have some feelings, or nothing's been done with it?
No. I've showed it once in the last year, but the smell is so bad in there from the must and being locked up, nobody's going to want to do anything with it until it's cleaned out, so...
I mean, it can be gotten rid of?
Yes.
It's not...
They're going to tear out the carpet and tear the walls down to the baseboard and any ceiling tiles and...
I mean, it's not, we don't have to demo a whole building?
No, 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 no. They just want to clean it out to the, clean it out to the bare bones and get the smell out, and then at least let people be able to get in there with it.
I suppose there was never any heat to get in. It's probably part of it.
They gave it to the city.
Yeah. So that's all I have. Unless you have anything for me.
No, moving on. Anybody, Street, do you have anything?
You missed the Attorney's Report.
Oh. The Attorney's Report.
First night, you missed him.
I was waiting his debut. I wanted to wait till the end for his. I figured it was going to be a long one.
Oh, no.
Go ahead.
No, not much to report.